The United States of America, into the Republic which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any public comment?
Yes, sir, we have one that would like to be read out loud. Do you want to do that?
Specifically to the agenda item?
Yeah, it is.
You want to do it before the agenda item? Okay. All right, it will be agenda item number two.
Uh, consideration and approval of the minutes. Council Regard, Workshop, meeting, September tenth, and Workshop, uh, Workshop in September tenth, twenty nineteen, Regard.
I make a motion to approve the City Council Regard, Workshop meeting, September tenth, September tenth, Workshop.
All favor. Okay, we're moving up to six. Uh, to consider an act on approval of side plan, we'll do playground. Council members?
Um, as you're aware, um, in October of two thousand nineteen, City of Willoughby, I have with us our consultants tonight, Dorothy and Nick. They're here to give a presentation on our, uh, park concept plan. But going back on two thousand nineteen, we did hire them to come up with a concept plan of a playground. And this is to replace the playground that we moved for the new public safety building that everyone here has heard of. So what we're going to present with you, uh, present to you is a concept plan that we have agreed upon. As far as we had discussed with our steering committee that was formed by council last year to move forward with our new playground. So just want to also let you know this concept was presented to our park board, which was unanimously approved. And we will walk through this, some items where we're not tonight thinking, okay, we're going to do playground A or playground B. This is more of a concept and show you based on our financial strengths, what's going to be the best thing for our public. So Dorothy, uh, we go up here, we can go through it. If you have any questions, go please go through your topic. Does everybody have a topic of this? No, we have a hard topic yet. What?
All right. Good evening. So as Dorothy mentioned, I just want to kind of walk y'all through the process of trying to through developing a concept. We both have the opportunity to work on the park master plan, so a little bit of the groundwork for going to the park. So then our next step is to kind of look at the site and discussion. So here we are at Cross Park. Just kind of walking through the opportunities there. Some of the opportunities stand out initially, the water over there, the great opportunities you don't always have on site. Then another component is the great opportunity to do some surveys. With that, we've also got a slightly identified group, uh, but both identified red, not identified for development. Those areas are good to stay out of, hard questions. And then you've got your identified yellow, those are kind of the digital gray. Those are great for extension and competition. These are both identified, which is where those are good areas for development and those are back for the home, public safety. The other thing we've got is by the side of the box, we've got the rail that goes to the yard. And something that comes along with that, we already got the extra side of the yard. Other things we've got is by the side of the road. The next thing we wanted to look at is kind of site context, what's going on in there. We all have a great public safety building, so there's our, so it's our content goals, how can we kind of afford that and design well later on. And it all ties together. And some of that is also the kind of visibility on that corner, its connection, visibility past here, and also the other part. So taking all those factors, site context, and groundwork, we're going to talk about. Here we've got kind of the overall park master plan. It's actually our definitely the playground, with the parking lot. So what I'd like to talk through is the other elements that were identified in this park. So area A, you've got your designated parking lot, it's pulled back from the road, it's separated, um, private, special level of comfort. It is out of your car. On the right, we're trying to kind of keep in common, it's a public safety, it's a park, it's a park. Moving out of the park, it's part of your playground areas. And you'll notice that this is all kind of taken place in that area, it was identified, ideal for development. So a lot of first place. So your playground, your kind of portion, closer back to the area, and some nice things about that is the nice things that you already have. So moving from the playground, you're identified, you're identified, you're identified, you're identified, you're identified. And one of the nice things about that is it's set on this side of the grid, so if your parents are probably in the playground, not having to go across. Walk around on there on the playground. That is a concrete walking trail. So what we're proposing is to take your existing walking trail, kind of take it out and put it. So there's a 80 by, and that's really nice with allowing a little walking, maybe a roller. Um, another idea that we was talking about, we've got a thing that's got a thing. That, and then something else that worked out really nicely, working in this trail, now you've got a little child that's going all the way around. You're involved with that. The next thing that we worked on, respected, and gathering on, and the idea behind that is some of those things that come into this park. That area is really nice and slowed down, and so by creating a large lawn, they're not going to work. They're all. Um, we kind of mentioned the activities inside of the playground as well, so on age, you've identified, you've identified. Couple of items proposed in the public restroom. Well, I change factors, that I, those are both a little bit of parking. Also, it's a playground as far as protecting, you know, the, you know, the, the change. Kind of mentioned this as far as context, the ability of the park, so one thing we're proposing is to start this line of the park. Other things are, the area, uh, you know, the squirrel, they've got, they've got, they've got. The things we talked about, we've created, we've created, we've created, we've created. Talked about, we've created, we've created, we've created, we've created. Started that as well, we've identified, we've identified, that way, not having to, that way, it's, that being a, that being a.
Yeah.
You don't want to put time on basketball.
You know? Really?
I, I would, I would think that. Or parking lots.
There's, there's some things that. I don't think. Other than. But. They.
Covering some of the other ideas that we touched on here as a master plan. Look at the parking the whole and so what might take place in that second day. So we've got a couple of different ideas. That could look like. Some interesting backstories. Signing. Couple of questions. Over. Later on. Um, job issues. Or first walk. First.
What's that, uh, tiny process? Are we already? Like. Very.
Have the last slide. Background that being. What we're. At this level. A lot of factors to play. Hopefully. Actually. Back. Ground area. Parking lot. Base. For. Playing. On. Pro. Couple of.
Can you say this kind of question? This. We. We're not. That. It. Hey. Our. Will. We were being kind of. Is. Is.
Um, I mean, there will. That's kind of the idea of my structure. Playground. Like. Something about. And we had a stop sign up. State of. South. And. I believe so. Permanently. Look down.
I was. Um, I am. About that. Uh, get her back. Get my back. Mark. Oh, but I want to. AD.
Yeah, so this evening. Parking. Pretty. What's that? Uh. Interesting. Kind of where. Let's like. Let's see. Put this forward with this concept. Sign development. That's right. But. But. Not really put. Time. But. Got that. That back. That. Got it. And then. With their comments. So. That finishes out. So right now. We're looking at. For. Our. April. And then from there, we go out for a couple of this process. That's. And start construction. So as far as. Starting construction. And. Everything. Everything. But. Going off the bit. I'm. Uh.
Sixty nine days.
Yeah. Oh, I know.
I know.
Well, she said construction. Please.
I know Raymond appreciates your construction.
So what were you thinking about? Park.
Heard you.
Oh, do you? There's.
Mm hmm. Nope. That's gone.
Holmes is kind of away from park. You know those parks. Yeah. Drive one.
Well. Is he hit this? Four.
I thought he was going to defend himself.
He's.
He's, uh, he's. Max did a favor.
I think this is great. Great. I said, great plan. I mean, just a thing I'm interested about. That the. Not only. We. Have. But also we did. Really. That if this. Balance. Or. It. Whole.
Well, even though I think that the three story municipal building. The farm. Uh, the park's a good place. I mean, I like it. Because that's the police department. For state security.
And it was. Putting that out. We have this. The five. Three. And. First. Just. Stop. The side. Of it. Yep. Mark.
We had our family. Prison.
I love her.
Need to clear all the brush up.
Do you need any action? Not.
I just want to. Pass. That.
You'd accept.
Yeah, I would. I would just accept the.
Except as a stop plan is presented.
I maybe we. Maybe we accept this part. Like plan as.
I'll say.
Before we go to the next agenda item, I have one quick announcement to make. Today is Bernie Parker's birthday. He's had several before. He's going to have several more to come. And so we had a ribbon cutting today and we weren't allowed to properly celebrate staff for his birthday. So, uh, the fire chief has a cake for you.
Where's the balloon?
That's.
A balloon for you. And, uh, Chief West was not here, but she wanted to make sure you had your badge.
Ah.
And your gun. So. Uh, happy birthday to Bernie. It was a, it was a little hectic today, so.
Yeah, I think probably do. This is the last one I have.
There's no candles.
Well, we didn't get a cake big enough. Thank you, Bernie.
She put all the candles on it.
Okay, moving on to the next item. Uh, to consider an act on ordinance eighty eight oh six dash twenty. Ordinance calling the May second twenty twenty. General and.
This is just housekeeping to call the election. We do this every year. The ordinance was written. And approved. Uh, we just need to approve the ordinance. To call the election.
So, uh, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, the ordinance number eight oh six dash twenty. An ordinance ordering a general election to be held on May second. Twenty twenty for the election. Certain municipal officer for the city of Wilford. Specifically council members place three, place four, place five. Designating calling place within municipal limits appointing society elected. And alternate society. Establish another. Contact. Providing severability clause. Providing for publication notice. Providing.
Okay. All favor. Okay. Item.
This is the one where we have the. This is where we have the public comment.
Okay. Next item is to consider an act on allowing. Valment. Helicopter. On his property located. Comment.
Yes. Blue. During. Or. Can't be at the council meeting. Black. Those. I live approximately one half mile northwest across the hills. Side of the. Well, I have no problem with helicopters for wounded warriors. My father was. Like. Bell helicopter. My oldest brother fought. I do have a problem with it. Calling. Quiet. I feel here. Not to be impressed with. While. All due respect, wounded warriors. Still reason. One hundred and twenty trail by car. Or truck. Press. Of course, no cause. Should be. In fact. Careful. Three miles away. Only can. Get. Mr. Bowman.
Now, was there? There a limit on the number of, uh, takeoff.
So. What we, we were approached by Mr. Bowman. To actually. Allow. Apparently he has the ability. He has ten acres that backed up on the back end of one hundred and twenty trail. Um, I believe the helipad was going to be teleported back to the property. And he had requested permission from us to. Land and transport wounded warriors and other veterans to his property. Um, right now, he's. Airport. Park County Airport. Uh, yeah. Um. We met with, uh, me and the captain met with him in December. We visited with a couple of times. He, he had mentioned that it was only going to happen no more than. Twelve times a year. And I thought that was pretty high. Our recommendation, uh, because we really don't have anything on point with this. Is to do a special permit and do it for a six month period to see how would operate, how would work. That would actually impact. Um, but at the same time. Heard whatever. We assume, uh, I directed Pat a special use permit, uh, that Mr. Bowman would have to comply with all FAA regulations. Regarding, uh, takeoff landing. Um. In light of events that happened in California. Really. Looking to address. Mr. Bowman, uh, if you don't know, is a skilled, uh, helicopter pilot. Uh, he is a wounded warrior himself. He's a double M P. He has jumped out of a plane. Army. Uh, he's done several events, charity events across the country. I, I have no issue with his expertise. Why?
It's okay.
I. It's a no. It. If. We were talking about a hundred acres. That. But. Sixty miles from airport. Then. Perhaps yes. But. I had a helicopter, like, you know, two o'clock in the morning. And it wasn't even that low. Flying. Um. It, it is not the appropriate. Flight. For helicopter. And. It's not enforceable. No more than twelve. City. Take. You. It, it really. Was. So it. And. I hadn't even thought about why. And the fact that. Why. I know. And then everybody has to. And, uh, we're not talking about. One neighborhood. That. Multiple. Landing over there at the airport that those neighborhoods were built after there. Airport there. So. This. Is. It, it simply makes. No sense. Is not. Does not. Serve any kind of benefit. It, it.
So you want my opinion?
You're on the council.
I do.
I, I. Yes.
So, uh. As a pilot myself. And if I owned a helicopter. Unfortunately for you, Amy, I'd take. I like the idea of, of just doing a six month trial. Uh. With some restrictions. So, uh, daylight hours. You know, uh. Emergency services. Having access. Uh. 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 You know, understand the noise. And, you know, helicopter fly load. For. Uh. You know, we've got med flights flying over our house on daily basis. Uh. Wouldn't mind finding out. We had one neighbor. Always got. That would.
Resolution. That draft. Heartache. At each time. Just. Issues.
I didn't see the resolution.
Yeah, it's in the. Of middle. So what's he having to attest? With. Clear. Or. Pass.
Um, Gary, you probably know more about the FAA guidelines. He has to be within so many feet of power lines. Um.
Bottom, bottom line, they have to make sure they have. To take off. Safe. But then there's restricted lines over test area. Test area for six winged airplane. They're not allowed to fly under two thousand. Uh, their landing. So. Pretty stressed. Thank you.
Yeah, with the city being. Uh, a lot of little helicopter. They want to have any press.
I know we're not operating. On our. So. Yes. All except.
Notify the neighbor.
Uh, I believe we did. No, Mr. Miller. I don't know. There's two neighbors though. I don't know if the other.
So.
I can't, I can't speak affirmatively.
So did the city notify?
I know we notified. I don't.
Okay. That. We know. So. Make a table list.
Yeah, I mean, you're going to have opinion of the other neighbor. I'm assuming it'll probably be the same.
It, it. It's almost zoning. I, I. Within how many feet. Anyone.
Is it, this is not. It's not a zoning. I mean, this is especially use permit. So do you want to do three hundred feet? You want to do a thousand feet?
Would be feasible. Good. Would.
That, that's what the six month trial period is.
Yeah. Well.
I mean, that locks us in.
So if we notify. Ten thousand feet. And, um. Is offered for our first responders. What kind of. Are there in play for? Of, uh. Civilian helicopter. We brought in on a scene.
No, no, that's not what I was talking. I was talking about that flight. Any of this.
No. Oh. Oh, that's what it's talking about. But it said. That's what it's talking about.
That's what I was referring to.
Yeah.
First responder.
Okay, I had.
Whether it's a police helicopter from Fort Worth or head flight to even to land.
He's also offered.
There's, there's the help. The airport three miles.
There's, there's liability. For our police department. Part four. Taking over or. Flying. Uh, civilian helicopter.
No, I'm not talking about it. I know, I'm not talking about it.
Bombing, requesting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what we want to do, table this.
So you'll. We could table it. Identifying the, I mean, he's got ten acres, so there's nobody going to be. Uh. Yeah. We're probably looking at. I guess the question at is that when you get the response back. That, that change vote. I mean. I'm assuming you're probably going to adventure. Lit on it. But you might get. But that's still shame. We, I'm, I'm all about table.
I'd. If it'd be more fair. I have more. Problem. Proper. Notification. One of those. Well, I know that this neighbor. But I don't know about another one. We have a neighbor that.
Well, thousand feet. If you, if you. If you go from the way we did on zoning. Well, if you do a thousand feet, we're going to, the way we do zoning. That's. Whether. Five feet or. Okay. So this one. Never.
That neighbor.
Yeah, I would. You know. Got. That neighbor's not. Uh, but also wouldn't. Know where. Putting. We. This. Like. Allow it. Daylight hours.
Again.
Well, we. We find out.
If. Find out.
I mean, the hook that you have on this. That. The last, the last clause of the permit says we can revoke it anytime. The.
Automatic.
No, I think we.
No.
We took, we took the automatic. We took. That was changed from. First. We, we took the automatic for allow. Wanted, we wanted more language in there that you don't comply with.
And I wouldn't mind asking. Bowman. Uh, does the panel. I F R. Black hole. Operator. After fifteen. Uh, that's. Or inherently. Daylight. Official.
Table. Move. Move table.
Table.
Second.
I'll second.
All paper. If there's any questions, we'll take that. Okay, item.
Just to be clear, that was up one thousand feet. On the note.
Uh. Item three, to consider an act on a question of members to evaluate. Are you.
In our, in our quest to form committees. Um, we have. Had the opportunity. To form a, a municipal complex committee. Uh, this is, we'll explore options for municipal complex. Light location, use. Um, we have. Uh, you've got the reservation. We had a certain set of, uh. Y'all cold?
Yes.
Y'all can thank Councilman Contreras. You can thank Councilman Contreras for the air conditioner coming on.
Yeah. Kay Davis and Steve Gould.
Yeah. Yeah. You can, you can thank Councilman Contreras and Bernie Parker for that.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
So as far as the, the item that's up for consideration. Um, this would be a committee that would, uh, research all the possibilities for development of municipal complex. Um, the mayor has, obviously he's not here, but he wanted to, uh. Nominate Kay Davis, Steve Gould to the, uh, to the committee. And then the council appointment would be Eric Contreras. Greg.
So do I.
And the, and the mayor would chair.
There.
So what are we making?
Appoint a city, uh, city municipal or municipal complex. Um, appoint Kay Davis, Steve Gould, uh, Eric Contreras, Greg Runenbaum.
And the mayor.
And the mayor. Yeah.
So, uh, I'll make a motion to create. Committee for municipal complex. Point. Uh, Kay Davis. Gold. Uh, Eric Contreras. Greg Runenbaum. With the mayor, Joel Moss.
There's. All favor. Okay. Item three. Our four.
Yep.
Our four, consider an act on city Wilford. Call.
This, so this is an update from the comms policy that we had discussion on at the December tenth meeting, believe it or not, that was the last council meeting we actually had, was December the tenth. And so, uh, uh, we have received some feedback, uh, but very little, I believe. Did you guys follow up with the last time? Did y'all, did y'all have a conversation today after?
Yes.
Uh, about the comms policy. And then I believe that's the only communication we received, um.
So is this the moment we're talking about?
Yep.
I have one little error.
Okay.
That's a. Second paragraph bottom, or not paragraph, but second text, where it says employees like to contact directly. Try to write a petition, because there's nothing following paragraph.
Oh, I see.
Yeah. Yep.
Yes.
We don't like elected officials talking to the media anyway. That was a joke, Green.
On the table, we had a first question, um, I had been person that was first. About a com call.
So, just FYI, uh, this does not apply to all employees.
I didn't receive this until you.
You got a copy of it?
I got a copy.
We have a motion.
Eric, have you?
I did. Uh, I'm moved that. Adopt.
Do you have a second?
So, before we go, if you have some more? So, Eric, just make sure, so there's three.
The best practices, social media policy of best practices, and.
Critical incident.
Yes.
Yeah, Pete West, I'd like.
I, I developed the critical incident importance of this stuff. It does not, um, after consultation with the communications director and several other cities that had established policies, um, cities can do that. I'm going to say response is an understood thing, like show them the word.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
I'll say.
It's at three.
Go with either the.
Okay, uh, five, to consider an act of approval of the purpose of the sponsorship of the foundation in the amount of five thousand dollars.
Uh, Mayor Moss was approached by the foundation, age, or just any sponsor, uh, for the first T program. And, uh, they are, when they build the first T out there at Squaw Creek Golf Course, they're going to have certain pillars that represent the ideals of the first. And we have the ability to purchase one of those, uh, with our name on it permanently, um, at a discounted rate. For, uh, so five thousand dollars can be paid throughout a pot. Pat, you wanna go into that a little bit, while we can talk?
Yes, the pot funds basically. Tourism. Basically criteria, but it puts it there. That's where it's. So, after talking to Pat, and showing me in the code, I'm, I'm.
Comfortable.
Uh, I just wanna make sure everybody understands, we're not buying a name on a plaque for promoting tourism.
And they actually had this event a year ago, we actually had folks say at the quality end, um, the anticipation is the hope that this program grows, they develop it more, um, and then you have other opportunities for overnight stay. We know a majority of participants last year, either stayed in Fort Worth. So, we kind of felt like we've got enough on.
But unfortunately for you, uh, after reading the code, uh, so every year we're supposed to give a report.
We do, we do.
So, uh.
Wait. Yes, we can give you that, we're actually, um, it's, you brought that up, uh, we're actually asking them to audit some of the. Funds that we're getting. Into it, but, uh.
Well, we're getting.
Yes. We, we have some questions about, uh, the reimbursement.
The one thing, one of the permits is for signing, or things.
It is a statute back in.
Got it.
Well.
Yeah, I'll show you.
Pat just went sixteen rounds, association, so let us take the benefit of someone else's legal.
So Brian, you mentioned that we have.
We have about seventy thousand, sixty eight thousand and change. Sitting in, there's a separate hot.
It has.
Yeah. It's not gonna, we don't, it's not gonna be on the financial end. In the audit. And we're challenging some of the quarterlies that.
Probably, probably with.
Yeah.
We can put on, I'll have Jake, yeah. It, it doesn't accumulate near as much as you thought, we haven't accessed the hot. I don't know when they assess them or access prior to, um, but you've got just under seven grand there right now. We're probably bringing in. With, without knowing all the, again, we're challenging, we're probably bringing seven top ones down. Maybe, maybe a little.
Do we have a motion? Is there a second?
Sure, yeah, three dots. I'll second.
All in favor?
Presentation.
Presentation.
Yes.
All right. Back in October, I attended the TML Economic Development Conference down in Basra, they do it every year, um, where they give, um, recommendations to cities and, um, updates on markets and whatnot. And whenever I went to this conference, I expected to get some basic understanding on economic growth, and I'd always kind of played economic growth, economic development, but economic development is actually much more sophisticated than just economic growth. Growth is happening all over Texas, it's something that is, um, um, it's only part of economic development in a city, economic development in a city promotes the well-being of the city, the well-being of the city promotes economic growth. It's all, it's, it's. That's right, and beyond it, yes, it didn't sound right. So, with this presentation, I'm going to present to you TML recommendations for an economic development plan and how to succeed with economic development. Can you just hit the slide for me? So, the recommendations, we're actually already doing the first one. Little park track. Uh, all cities statewide have kind of the same tools in their tool, in their toolbox on, uh, drawing businesses in, and since everybody has the same tools and the market's so competitive, companies are taking a more holistic approach to it, and their companies like to look at a city and look at it and think, okay, this is someplace that I actually want, I would want to live, this is someplace that I'll do business, this is someplace we wanna be. Um, and so. It's recommended that cities make a good first impression with a sharp website, consistent branding, we're doing the website, you know, we're on that, we're on that path, uh, develop parks, promote community, those are the things that we're doing, and then to show an appreciation to little park businesses to create a business culture for the retailers in the little park, it just kind of creates a bit of, uh, of energy there. And not only does this, um, allow the developers to look at us and just ask, is this a place that we wanna be, also kind of allows us to look at our own message and ask ourselves, are we projecting the image of what we want to come in? I wish. Yes. So, the next step on this is with creating a plan, and in any plan, you've got to, you need to assess your needs and identify your resource. In the packet, there was a, um, uh, some literature about community, I don't, I hope you got, had a chance to look at it, uh, I'm not sure if you did or not, but, um. I'll, I'll come back to that, I just wanted to reference that, I hope that you got a chance to work at it, but in quantifying our needs, we're already quantifying our needs, we have upwards of twenty-three million dollars of CFP projects to complete over the next six to ten years, um, and that's in today's dollars, um, and we are tasked with buying that revenue that won't further the burden on the taxpayer. We've quant, you know, we've quantified these needs, and that's easy to do, but what are the projected revenues that will ensure the completion, what can we just, what can we do to ensure that we're gonna have enough money to complete these projects without breaking factors? Looking at what we have, we have about a hundred and thirty acres of property left to develop, and that's not very much, and that's not an exact number, um, but it's roughly that much.
Does that include the E P J as well?
I'm not sure, we don't have, you know, you and I talked about needing to get an exact number, so I'm, I'm listing that, but part of what we need to do is get an exact number on that, because this is gonna be all about gathering data. Um, so, this remaining acreage is gonna have to provide for our current backlog project and also promise long-term return for future maintenance. We have a land use map, but it only gives broad zoning plans, it's a good concept for which areas should be commercial or residential, but it's only a general idea. TML advises that cities refine their land use maps with a revenue by acre model in order to maximize the ROI, our return on investment by doing some strategic development. What that looks like, say, our, our, um, land use map, you know, has things residential or it's commercial or light industry, I don't think we have any light industry, but what kind of commercial will make that, what kind of residential will make that? This virginity company, they will take our land use map, and they assemble data, and they will actually pull up and show how much revenue per acre, this, these, these different areas are pulling in, and give you a, a visual picture and data that is actually tangible, tangible data that we can use in making decisions about development. And they also give the, um, baseline of where our CFP projects are, like all the roads that need to be completed, um, and will help us determine what the best way is to close that gap between our resource and our, uh, our needs now and in the future. And, uh, no, one more, I spoke to them, because time is of the essence, everything's moving, it's quick, 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 they can get the data put together, um, it could take between one to four months, depending upon what we need, and I don't think it would take them four months, but they do everything from just like basics, coming to the city and doing workshops with your residents, and we don't need something of that intensity, because we've already, we're already doing quite a bit. Um, so I believe it would be very much worth the investment, so we can have proper data. Okay, Rose. Along with understanding our land and, um, and looking at it as a revenue per acre basis, we should, we also need to consider our market trends and projections. Retail industry trends are relatively fluid, but they should be taken into consideration when building a plan, fortunately, we already have retail coach and the Park County E D C as current resource. At the conference, retail coach gave a presentation of the twenty nineteen retail trend, on a statewide level, the retail boom has only affected the last two more years, but that's not necessarily true for our specific area, restaurants are up, clothing is down, but some expansions are happening, and new, and a new trend called experiential retail is emerging, so what does that mean for a park? I spoke with the CEO of retail coach while I was down in Grapeberry. Not Grapeberry, excuse me, Basra. While I was down in Basra, I asked him if he, if, since we subscribe to them, we already have the service, if they'd be willing to come and give us a report, um, uh, and recommendations about retail and what would work in little parks, because they already have experience with people who are coming to talk to them, and then they do this all the time, we're already subscribing, and he said, yeah, absolutely, he can come out to help us state that, you know, just give us further data on what we wanna do. Along with the retail trends, we also need to keep up to date with the non-retail industry, and we can best do that through our membership with the Parker County E D C, now, Parker County E D C, they're not gonna bring in retail for us, they are more, you know, industrial, uh, centered, and we don't have any industrial property, but they're also, if, if there's a company that's looking to relocate, um, you know, they're gonna kind of filter through the Parker County E D C. you know, they're going to kind of filter through the Parker County EDC. And the EDC, if they know what we're looking for, what we're trying to, what we're trying to want, they'll filter that through to us. But in that planning stage, you know, another way to partner with them is that we can work to find what our niche is in Parker County. There's no getting away working with everybody else. I had a realtor tell me that she saw Willa Park as being like a medical complex. That the urgent care is going to eventually be a hospital. So, you know, if there's a medical building company that would like to relocate or say it piques interest of, I don't know, a medical supply, and we can get them to come here. It's just, we don't need to narrow our scope. I think there's a lot of opportunity there. And we work with our neighbors, work with each other, look at the data, look at the markets so we can decide what that niche should look like and be sure. Y'all stop me anytime.
You're good.
All right. So once we've established our baseline of our needs, identified the best specific area of the land, we have an idea of what businesses will work best in Willa Park, then council can build a consistence for short and long-term goals that are data-driven. I have an opinion on what I think Willa Park should look like. Eric got his opinion, Brian has his opinion, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But we don't have any data. We can't, you know, say, okay, well, I support my own view with this, I support my view with that. We also don't necessarily have the data to, you know, attract a particular type of business. Really need to start having that conversation. And with the right data, our strategy for development will have a good balance between the immediate cash flow that is available immediately from development that will provide for today's needs and provide for a lot of this backlog that we have with $14 million in road repairs. But then we also can, we can also plan for the more gradual, reliable revenue stream for, that will provide for the people. Everybody's talking. All right. Okay, Rose. So no plan is any good if it just sits in a box or just sits in a file and doesn't go anywhere. And so, I already went through strategizing, special, important, using. I did too, at the same time. Strategizing, I already went through the strategizing. Next one, Rose. All right, so no plan is any good unless it's just going to sit in a file. It's got to have some cash flow. And this is where our 380 agreements, our tax laws, things of that nature come into play to make it happen. And like, as it stands right now, our staff wouldn't necessarily know which businesses to incentivize because we've never really had a conversation on what we would like to see come in here. I don't know how many of you have spoken with developers, but every time I've spoken with a developer, the very first question is, what do you want? What do you want in Willa Park? That's a very first question. And I, well, Amy would like to see, but I'm not sure of what we all want to see. And then I can tell them, I know that the data, you know, our income level is such and such and whatever. And then he'll say, then they'll ask, well, what land do you have to offer? You know, we don't necessarily have any of that either. If we have a consensus, then we can answer those questions. And not only that, you'll put a message out there. And so if it's somebody who wants to put in a trash site, I don't necessarily want a trash site, but I don't know what the market says on that. That's not necessarily a business that I would want to incentivize. If they have, if they're thinking about doing a retail center of some sort, then perhaps that is something worth incentivizing because, and that's how we use those incentives to say what we want to come in. Make sense? What do you think, Eric? What do you think?
Yeah.
You got a plan before you do anything else. What do you, what do you think, Eric?
Oh, let's get it.
And Brian, what are your thoughts over there?
Well, I can have a discussion with advisors, definitely from a staff standpoint. Narrowing down our focus.
Yeah. Because on this, the incentive side, the incentive part of it, this really is your campaign. This is really more you come and play, but you need your right to come up with what you want to provide. So there's a misnomer kind of in Willa Park. And we're going to have to take whatever we can get. And with that, there's an idea that we're just too far behind in terms. But I've looked at all the things, and I answered a short amount of time. Brian and staff, Willa and its council, we've done things that were considered impossible. Downwater, town almost burned down. But all these decades-long problems, and we've built a firm foundation to stand upon. And economic development, a plan for economic development is the next logical step. And I think it's one that we, we could really be successful with. The council's great, the mayor's amazing, Brian, Matt, he's awesome. And all of our staff, so.
So how do we get to point A, point B? How do we get to have that conversation?
Yeah.
Because I've heard along the road, I'm sure there's going to be funds needed and plans laid out. Where are those funds coming from? So is Google 2020, is this 2021 a viable fiscal year ever? You know, and I know we can't answer those now.
Yeah, well.
We've got a right to.
Yeah. The first. Yeah, the first step is going to have to be exploring community, perhaps coming out. I did, for the sake of, I don't want to say policy, but I didn't reach out to the community and get a quote or anything from them. I called and I spoke to the CEO because I met him down in Bastrop just to ask how long would it take? Because we do need, this needs to be done yesterday, but that's like everything else in town. We had to get it done yesterday and we didn't get it done. So step one's going to have to be to seek out opportunity, get a quote there, and for council to decide if this is something that we want to invest in. My opinion, it's worth investment. TML recommends that cities move in this direction and start looking at everything by revenue, by revenue base. I'm asking, it's got to be council pleasure for Brian to seek out community for to get that process started, gather a call for that. And.
Get a quote, scope of service.
Yes, quote, scope of service, that's step one. And then I believe that a committee would be good to have because it's always good to have a committee where you have a couple of council members who are educated on it. Because every council can't be educated on everything. I trust the things that Leah's doing, submerged in the park stuff. So whenever we're featuring, I, I trust it. I actually had a final slide. Do you want? Yes. But, so to have a committee put together, Doyle's not here tonight. I don't know, I don't think it's citizen-led. This is more staff and council. You know, the residents already put together a comp plan. We're not deviating from that comp plan.
Talking about economic development subcommittee.
Yeah. Why are you looking at that?
I love committees.
I actually enjoy committees because I can trust whatever Greg and Eric discover or they learn.
I say that tongue-in-cheek.
Okay, okay.
I'm on every committee, so I say that.
Oh, you say you go to the table. Any other?
We can, I can reach out to community and get a quote, scope of services, report back to the guy. Take it up with Mayor Moss. Obviously.
And we can also say about having community, we've got to get the data first. But then also, Patrick Mallor said that he can give a presentation to council about.
Who?
Their new director, the EDC's new director.
Oh, yeah.
Parker County EDC, he won't be over there until March. But after March, he can come and give us a presentation on the things that are going on in Parker County. And, you know, we can ask him questions about Willa Park. We don't have a subcommittee.
I'll remind Patrick that his Katy Tigers have eight states. And Alito has.
So, real quick, thanks, Amy.
Yeah.
Great presentation. As far as the economic subcommittee, any economic development, open forum, any workshop?
Yes, now, I agree with that. That is, that's a huge.
The subcommittee would not have the ability to go out. And I think the subcommittee, part of the direction of that is, and maybe it's through a workshop, but right now, we kind of have a, I don't want to say a shotgun bro, but we're kind of, as Betty says, what do you want to be when you grow up? Well, economic development's coming. When we went to I, I, yes, yes. Two years last year, nobody knew who we were. It was, where's Willa Park? You know, why are you here? A year later, you have developers coming up for us saying, how do we get into Willa Park? And at that point, coming to that conference, we kind of have a discussion of, we've got to narrow down our focus. I've got, we only, the challenges we have with economic development, we don't have a lot of land to develop. We don't own, the city does not own the land directly. So you kind of acquiesce some of that control of the land. And three, we don't have a very, you know, it's hard for us to, in good faith, say, well, council would go, would do a 380 agreement on this, or this is the appetite for this project. So, you know, we've had some QSRs wanting to come in and get some incentives. You know, I just don't want to break these guys. But eventually, that's when, I think, having a workshop or that sub could narrow down that focus to that workshop. Kind of like what Bernie's doing.
Well, I just, you know, for my economic development, it could be all hands on deck, you know, from council.
Yeah.
You know, in order to do that, you have to have a good workshop.
Yes. Yep. I, I, I concur. I just think the sub, as Amy was pointing out, would narrow that focus down. But, you know, clearly, if that's not the will of the council, then we can explore all the options. There's some things, there's some things that he's, he's brought some deals to the table.
We kind of have a disconnect. We have, some businesses want to come here, but we're not putting property in. They don't, they don't have the developed property. Really need to have a big developer come in and put everything together. And so right now, we don't have any kind of late vote, we don't have, we don't have that. You know, we don't have the property. Brian, sit down and Doyle, you know, Doyle and Brian sit down at the table and it's what Willa Park is looking for. And so that's important. And I wanted to take a quick comment to say about us not owning the property. I forgot to mention, another reason that we want to take more of this approach that once someone buys a property, we don't have a whole lot of leavenings to look at anymore. You know, because then it's private property. But if we're already putting out there, putting our dealers out and attracting, you know, pulling in the right developers, he's looking at that property, he's not looking for that property. We're going to acquire whoever tries to build X, Y, Z property. And then that's how we have power, that's how we have control.
Before the question, look at that, the city has the ability to buy a property.
Yeah, but I don't.
Yeah, I'm not.
It may be an option, I mean, gosh, it's surprising.
I want to be clear for both the Democrat and the, I was not advocating to them buying property. But eventually, that question will come up.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next, I'd consider an act on Thursday.
So February 11th is going to be a fairly busy evening. The auditors are coming out to give you the audit for the FY 2019. They're, the God delivery plan, the cap list today, so I believe that's going to be a lot. Eric can tell you it's not the cap list out. We also have some meeting appointments with some vacancies, some on the tour, some on the park board. Another one from my wife. She'll have some meeting appointments as well. And then finally, take whoever intends to take court financial, December 30th, October 11th. Also, I don't know what the appetite would be for a second meeting in February. The work of the product. Is there anything going? You want to do hot? Okay. Give me the, give me the, I don't need an action, I don't need to talk to the EDC.
I'm going to get a, get a, I think, a quote.
I can get that, I don't, I don't need counsel black.
No, I'm sorry, I have a quote.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You ever bring that up to a state black man?
Yes.
You have anything? You got any?
I didn't know I'd consider an act on Saturday.
February 11th, 7:00 PM? No workshop? On behalf of the staff, I can tell you that's not. We do not.
Any comments?
Any council comments?
Good day, good job, Dave.
Email notification.
Four meetings?
Meetings, yeah.
That is, yes. The new website that we're going to have hopefully live is going to address a ton of communication that we have. Right now, we have an RKA internal calendar that I don't even look at. Hopefully, the new email system. But I. Um, I want to echo Amy's comments and thank the staff. Mike, congratulations on your new house. I noticed a scratch. I noticed a scratch, so I'm pretty sure you're going to get on top of that. Thursday is celebrating greatness of the nine-time state champion Alito Bearcats. More than Brownwood, more than Stephen. Let's little dig at Eddie. Six o'clock at the shops, they're going to recognize, mayor approach, the mayors will be recognized, Doyle's out, so they're going to recognize Leah there. We will have a proclamation to be added, I don't believe we're going to have a proclamation from the government. It'll be a great event, it's going to be held at the shops. Some of the stores are going to be staying late, so we encourage everyone to come. We appreciate sales tax, we always appreciate that. Not necessarily, you'll be reminded of this, February 17th is a holiday for President's Day, but we will be closed on that day. And then something I want to put in your ear, March 3rd is the presidential primary. If you have not been to City Hall on Election Day, March 3rd, you need to come see it. If you haven't voted, definitely. We are going to ask you to close City Hall for city business on that day. It will vacate a number of parking places and hopefully reduce the congestion. Long Ranch House, these two lovely and talented ladies up here cannot get anything done. People wander into their offices thinking they're actually calling location booth. We, by nine o'clock, we kick both of them out, so now I've got three people in my office, which makes it very uncomfortable. And so with the confined quarters that we have here, we're going to ask them to formally close.
Hey. Their motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All favor.